All right, welcome to the zoning board. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party recording this hearing, if so, we don't have the enterprise here tonight, please step forward if you are recording. Our staff up here on my right, we have Mark Fineran on the end, he's a member, Scott Peterson, Frank Duffy to my right, James Morris, vice chair to my left, and Tony Petrucci on his left, and we have Noreen Stockman as zoning administrator, and Ashley Demello, office assistant. Any person seeking to make a public statement on anything not before the board tonight shall have two minutes to speak, but the board will not comment at this time. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on any application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing, the hearing process, and reaching a decision. Number one, to each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. And four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, speak into the microphone, and amplify your voice for the recorded audio for FCTV viewers. So does anyone have any public comment tonight? Not related to any case? Yes? Go for it. Oh, you don't?
Don't.
Okay. All right, so first up, we have all continuations tonight. First up is 015-24-Romene, 25-45, Toby Lane in East Falmouth.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Welcome to your new position. We are requesting a continuation. We've been continuing to dialogue with the neighbors, with Attorney Kirk. We are, I hope, we are at a point where we have reached some plans that are, the plan for plans that will be satisfactory. So we just haven't had a chance to have those finalized yet, but we've been continuing to work with the abutter and with Attorney Kirk. Attorney Kirk was made aware of our continuation request and would like to ask for continued hearing date, and would of course be happy to sign any extension if necessary.
I personally am against it because we've had too many, and we're like jammed. Our schedule is, I think you even know, we are like, I think we have Thanksgiving off coming up. I mean, it's pretty jammed. And I think a withdrawal without prejudice might be more appropriate right now.
So if necessary, we'd certainly do that. My preference would be to ask for the continuance and see what the board has to say, but you know, rather than a denial, I would obviously ask for withdrawal without prejudice. But our preference would be to ask for a continuation, and that's what I had told Attorney Kirk would be doing this evening as well.
Okay, we can, any other board members have any comments?
So I would agree, I mean, this goes back to perceived February 2nd, 2024, and I certainly appreciate the applicant said I accept his representations, they're trying to work something out, but I just think it's better to have these things worked out before we start hearing. I don't like kicking things down the road. I don't want to ambush Mr. Clawor with a denial tonight, I think that would be fair, but I think at some point, the board should, as a matter of policy, to say, you know, if you're not ready, you shouldn't be filing. Just my two cents.
I agree, I agree with you.
I'm certainly not inclined to disagree, and I think it would give them better time to work out something with the neighbors, and I mean, I was so against this, I think a fresh start, so to speak, would probably be the best reflection on the whole thing. And I think it would probably also provide a better outcome.
Anyone else up here? Tony?
No, thank you.
Frank, you good?
It seems to be a consensus here, so I don't have anything to further add.
Anyone from the public want to comment on it? No? Noreen, do you have anything?
Or anyone actually here from who is planning on saying, or just inquire?
Is anyone here for that project, for 45 Toby? We've just had a lot of continuances, and we just rather would have it come in complete, and that's the way I feel anyway.
Especially in light of the fact, in his own words, they have a plan for a plan.
Yeah.
I think they need time to plan.
Yeah. The three, Madam Chair, may inquire how much time are you looking for, Mr. Clawor?
I expected we'd have revised plans within the next week or two, so I was thinking for the September hearing, September 5th hearing, or sometime shortly thereafter. That's what we had hoped to do. I think realistically, if we withdrew and reapplied, we'd be looking at probably a late September, early October hearing date. October 5th is when we're scheduling for sometime.
Yeah, we got a 9/26 on here.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, it's, I don't think we're looking at a wildly different hearing date if we continue or withdraw and reapply shortly. You know, in fairness, Mr. Morris, we thought we were ready, then the neighbors were opposed to that plan, so what we've been trying to do is to work with the director of butter to come up with something that is satisfactory. They've looked at a number of different options in that interim time, but you know, obviously I will defer to the board's judgment here.
How many parties are you negotiating with? There was a couple of them.
We've been working primarily with the director of butter, who has engaged with Attorney Kirk. The concerns expressed by the parties are largely the same.
Yes, okay.
So that's who we've been dialoguing with directly.
All right, thank you.
So my suggestion would lead to be to grant a continuance with the record being endorsed, no further continuances, as we do in the court system, or just request the applicant to withdraw.
Somebody back there wants to speak.
Come on up. Thank you, Frank.
Good evening, John Anderson, 50, Toby Lane. I think almost the question might be directed at the attorney. What are the new plans? And I guess I'll say the more clearly, are we doing away with the second floor, or are we still talking about a second floor? You know, the height is, height is a concern to the neighborhood. So that's really my question, is we working on height, or are we not?
Height is one of the considerations that they're looking at, and it's, you know, placement, setback, height, there's a number of factors that they're going to, view corridors, things like that.
I just want to point out that you have to sell it to this board, too, so I think to withdraw and get all your ducks in a row might be your best path.
You want a motion to continue without further, that was just a suggestion?
I can go either way, I'm just looking for consensus from the board. My suggestion that we either grant a continuance, but make it clear that we're not going to continue further, or that leaves the potential to hamstring him, and... My concern with this is that it's not fair for the abutters to have to keep coming back here every couple of months and then having a continuance, so...
Do you want to speak, too? Come on up.
Catherine Dalton, I'm the immediate abutter. There's only been one plan brought to us so far, and that was relatively recent, within the last couple of weeks, so...
Okay, thanks.
I think they need the time to put this together, so I would go for withdrawal. I think that's appropriate under the circumstances.
Well, in that case, I would ask for withdrawal without prejudice, and we'll be back with this board as soon as we have the revised plans completed.
I will make a motion that we allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
So they will get re-notified? Abutters will get re-notified in the mail? Okay? All right, moving along. Quiets glasses. All right, next we have 05-56-24-O'Brien, 15 Ingleside Drive, East Falmouth. This is a continuation also. And we have Kevin.
Good evening again. As you know, I'm here before you, representing Michael O'Brien, prospective purchaser, 15 Ingleside Drive, which is currently owned by Paul Saropolis. We're seeking permission to construct a new single-family residence on a site that has an existing unfinished foundation. At the last meeting, we discussed the 1987 special permit that was issued. I provided the board with a copy of that special permit that had been recorded at the registry in an appropriate timeframe. There's no question that the foundation was abandoned, however, there was a question as to whether or not the special permit was still applicable, that was presented to town council, or whether or not the creation or the issuance of a building permit and the construction of the foundation constituted substantial reliance on the special permit and was still in effect. I believe that this, that question was posed to town council, I have not heard as to a response as of yet.
Anybody have questions for Kevin? Mark?
No, I don't. To be honest with you...
I just, sorry, go ahead.
I have, Mark, I just commented, I kind of liked the design.
Just wanted to confirm the denite system.
Yes, it's in a nitrogen-sensitive area, so I think they have to.
Just wanted to confirm. Thank you, Kevin.
Frank?
No, I was, no, I don't have any specific questions.
Just to confirm my notes. Lot size is 7318.1.
Correct.
Five-bedroom, denite, lot comparison...
I believe it's four-bedroom.
Four-bedroom. Four-bedroom. One-car, 2368 total square feet, the ridge height is 28 feet 10 inches.
That's what I had, yes.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
I mean, I think it's a, I think it fits well, it's a good design. You've got 24.3% coverage, but in this district, we can go to 25. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have anything before we go to the public?
Let's hear from them.
Anybody from the public?
Katrina Koschevos, 9 Ingleside Drive, I'm the director of butter. He still has the property staked improperly on the easterly side. Per his plot plan, it's supposed to angle in, it's still angled out, it has not been fixed since the last hearing. Per your regs, it's supposed to be staked properly, and it's not, and it was never fixed when I brought it up at the meeting two weeks ago. Per the original special permit your board issued in 87, the proposed house was 1,584 square feet. The home was determined to be adequate in terms of the size for the proposed single-family dwelling for the lot. You said that there will be no adverse impact on the neighbor's visual character, including views and vistas with the construction of the proposed dwelling. This new proposed dwelling will shade my house and will now block my view of the water, because he's moving it all the way up, parallel to my house, where the original proposed house with the, excuse me, the foundation that's in there sits back, and the view I have, the water, would still be there. Most of the houses on that street, there's only seven of us, are all ranches, except for Ross across the street, which is a colonial, and Dave next to me, which is a, like an oversized cape, but everything else right around there are all small ranches. Again, I'm not opposed to a house, I'm just opposed to the size of the house he is proposing, like, because like I said, it will shadow me and it will take away the views I have of the water. And again, it's still staked improperly, and per your regs, it's got to be staked properly before he, the hearing is even supposed to be opened.
And your driveway is staked improperly?
My, no, my driveway is staked properly.
Correct, it's the other side.
It's the other side, but when they were staking my driveway, I pulled a building permit three years ago to do, redo my deck, and I knew exactly where the lines were because we had it staked. His surveyor was putting three stakes literally in the middle of my driveway, and it's supposed to be a straight shot. I was the one the police were called on, because we kept telling him it's incorrect, and I had a copy of my plot plan, and I know from the edge of my deck to my lot line is 13 feet 2 inches, and they kept moving the stakes in to, they were literally in the middle of my driveway, I could not drive down my driveway, and I knew it was a straight shot because we had had it surveyed three years prior. So I don't know what his surveyor was using, and then Mr. O'Brien came out and said to my husband, I was standing in the house listening, that surveys are subjective and arbitrary. And I'm like, I don't think surveys are, I think they're very particular and accurate. So that's, like I said, I'm not against a house, I'm just against to the size of the house and the height of the house, and the volume of the house that he is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for her.
Go ahead, Frank.
You said that the shadows from this building will affect your house.
Yes.
Now, you're to the west, right?
Yes.
So sunrise again east, the shadows will be just morning?
In the morning, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any plan showing the shadow, how the shadow would be cast?
No, I don't.
So it's just basically your guess?
Well, from the height and where he's positioning the house now, yes.
I understand it, but it's...
I would just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask?
Go ahead, Tony.
You say your view will be blocked by this house, can you tell me, and you're to the right of this lot, am I correct?
Correct.
It appears that you have a living room on the left, are you looking, is that the...
Yes.
That you'll be blocking, that'll be blocked?
Yes, there's a window right in the living room, we can see through the trees down to the...
And that house at the end of Ingles, so there's a small little opening through the shrubbery, so the real view is during the wintertime, then?
No, well, mostly through the wintertime, but I can see it through the trees now. I can see the water through the trees now.
Well, I think we do consider things like that, but I'm, I'm just trying to wonder how often your view is used from that window, but I take your word for it.
Okay.
I'm just looking at this now.
Not to be argumentative, but the only time we can consider that is when the setback is less than 10 feet. And the other considerations are for public views and vistas.
We generally don't enforce priv, unless, yeah, it's...
Well, it has to be.
I understand.
It's private matter.
I can state some cases, but if you, if you read between the lines, so to speak, there's only, it's...
No, I read your bylaw, it's through the public ways, I understand that, I'm just...
And also, I mean, this is on the existing foundation, correct?
No, he's tearing out the foundation and moving the house closer to the street. Much closer to the street.
I just don't see how on this plan he can even push it back. I mean, he's got, he's 10 feet, 10 feet, 10 feet.
With the size of the house he's proposing, yes.
And a septic.
You know, if there was an 9 feet...
I think, I think the original proposed house, the septic was supposed to go into the front, and this one, he's proposing the septic to go in the back, because the way the foundation is so far back, I think the original was, the septic was going to go into the front.
Well, now we're doing a nitrogen.
I know that.
Anybody have any other questions for her before she, for the next one?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Hague, I'm the abutter on the other side of this property. I'm on the corner of Ingleside and Edgewater Drive East, East Falmouth. The line between where it's, where they're going to, supposedly going to put the house to my property line is 10 feet, and if the surveyors sneeze, they could be, you know, on my land instead of theirs, it's so close, it's 10 foot, 10 foot 1, but the house they're planning on putting on there is huge, and they already got a extension of the size of the property that was going to be put there, back when the other person was going to put a house up. Now they asked for an extension for, I don't know, what is it, 20...
4.
Whatever, it's, they're asking for larger, and the lot is one of the smallest lots on the street, so they're really crowding things in on the street. I mean, we have normal-sized homes, and this one here, I don't know, it's going to be 2300 square feet, is that?
The total?
2368.
Yeah, 2368.
And the lot is 73 something, so that's...
7318, yeah.
Quite an enormous house to put on that small lot, and, you know, I don't know who my neighbors are going to be, I'm very friendly, but it seems like the guy's going to move in with me, they're very, very, going to be very close. I'm not making this a joke, but it's, you know, it's, it bothers me, I'm sorry, but, and I know you people would want somebody moving in, and you're back, yeah, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Come on up.
Michelle Tortelli, 168 Edgewater, so I'm not abutting this one, I'm abutting the other one, but I wanted to address this one, because I see this builder has two other properties in the neighborhood, this being the third and Sea Spray being the fourth. The other two, he's already gotten variances on house size, now he's going for two more, and it's very concerning that if you're saying you're supposed to have 20% lot coverage, why do we keep bumping that up, or is that just a suggestion? So I guess that's my question, you know? We're getting bigger, we're talking about nitrogen loading in the neighborhood, we're talking about, you know, everybody encroaching on everybody, these are small lots, they're non-conforming to begin with, and then we're going huge, so, and I'm not quite understanding why they keep getting approved, and so I thought I would just discuss on this one as well.
Thanks. I can tell you that this, he's in, within right.
20% lot coverage, and he's going 24.9, how is that in with right?
It's 25.
25% with a special permit.
Yeah.
Well, right, but why do you, you can give, you give special permits to everybody that applies for them, I'm kind, I'm still not quite sure how that works. I don't know what you're able to do on the ZBA, you know, if, so anybody that asks for 25%, unless a neighbor complains, you say yeah. Is that what I'm understanding?
Madam Chair, this is a concern that many people have. It appears, before I came on this board, these sorts of things appear as if the board just lets everything go by.
Right.
Everything they're asking for is in the zoning bylaw and can be done, so they're within their rights to ask for the special permit.
So why say 20% if you're going to approve up to 25%?
Because the zoning bylaw says in this district, you can go to 25, the zoning bylaw, not this board, but the zoning bylaw says that.
So you have no authority to say no if they're compliant and under 25%? Is that what I'm understanding?
If the lot, if all setbacks are made and what is proposed is under certain percentages, they get the permit by right, they don't have to come in front of us. A lot of what we see, there are people who want to do projects that are on pre-existing non-conforming lots, that have to request a special permit to build what they're going to be. Sometimes people come before us, they're asking to put a garage in the front yard. The zoning bylaw requires them to get a special permit to do that, and we generally will approve that because it's just the way the lot is constructed, or it could be, it's just, it's just out of necessity, and there's very little complaint. The request for a special permit to increase lot coverage, it's a discretionary grant up to 25%, so the board doesn't have to say yes, the board can say no. What oftentimes happens is that they will get approval, but there will be specific conditions. Applicants sometimes come before us requesting this, and they're putting in, or in this case, a denitrification, a denite system, so in terms of nitrogen loading, they're making a concession by putting something in that's good for the area, the town, and the nitrogen, the overall nitrogen load of the town, so it's a little give and get. But the board listens to abutters, and we give great deference to what abutters have concerns or complaints, so...
So when I, because it's kind of hard to go on your site and get all the information for this, and there was a note in there that the septic tank was 17 feet and it's supposed to be 20, is that also with a denitrization tank, or...
I'd have to reread the comment from Board of Health, those also get updated in our file, if they're corrected.
That was corrected to 20.
Okay.
And the, I understand what you're saying, and when we were dealing with, we call them bulk calculations comparing to the size, and, you know, when we went through this, you know, I argued that each street on Mare Vista would be considered a neighborhood, but the board didn't agree, and I mean, if you drive beyond your street, you're going to find houses that are this size and larger, and, you know, I mean, it's just the trend, and there's really nothing, they're, they're within their rights.
When the 25% size bylaw was put in for our neighborhood in Seaco Shores, am I accurate on that?
Oh, it's for everywhere.
For Falmouth.
All of Falmouth.
All the small, yeah, so basically it works out to be all the peninsulas for, you know...
Okay, and you get to go up 30 feet, so you get...
35.
35.
(laughing).
Well, I mean, that's, I think it's always been 30.
Like four-bedroom, five bathrooms, I mean, it's...
It's always been 35, I mean, and, you know...
I know, I'm just...
It's hair-splitting, and...
I wanted my opinion to be heard, so I appreciate you.
We try to be fair.
It's tough.
And we have denied, but...
So I guess I don't...
The reality too, Madam, is a lot of the development on Mare Vista was allowed to go to four bedrooms because of the septic, before they wouldn't, or, excuse me, sewer, before they wouldn't have had the room to put in the septic that's required, but I mean, the zoning bylaw doesn't always catch up with the development trends, we're always a step or two behind, and we have to work with what we have, that's our job.
Well, I would say also for this gentleman at the corner, when I look at his house, he's going to have no privacy, because that is such a high house with a widow's walk, and he's right next to them. I hope you don't have an outdoor shower right there, because...
He's a nudist.
Because I'm like, wow, I feel very bad for you, so, thank you.
Kind of the rule of thumb on that, and I mean, it's zoning, and it's beyond this town, is the height can be four times, you know, four times the setback, and we're actually under that.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's lots in Falmouth Heights that are, you know, 3,300 square feet.
A lot worse than this, yeah.
43, you know, and...
Well, I, my parents are on Mount of Mascoys, so that's what I'm figuring this is kind of (laugh) going towards, so, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up?
I'd like to just ask a question. My name's Daniel, Daniel Foster, I live on 12 Credon Drive. I'm a friend of Bill, not a neighbor to either of these properties, but you're taking into consideration on Seaco Shores. I'm just wondering, do the abutters' opinion of how their neighborhood looks matter?
It does to me, I'm speaking for me, but it does to me, yeah.
I listen to everyone.
But I also have to go by the rules.
But just, you know, the 35% and how big this is going to be, and how it's going to look down on Bill's shower, stuff like that, when the abutters say what they have to say, does that carry any weight?
Well, for myself, I listen to everyone, but I mean, we have to make these things set.
Yeah.
I mean, we kind of have to take a broad view, and I mean, not down into your shower, but...
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, and the builder, the attorney, they have no personal relationship with anyone on the board?
No.
No, absolutely not.
That would require disclosure, and we could be fined very significantly by the State Ethics Board if someone made a complaint and there was an undisclosed conflict.
We wouldn't be back next week.
No.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Come on back up. Before you start, Kevin, what about any kind of screening for Mr. Hague's property? Could we, Melissa, go ahead, Mr. Hague.
Bill Hague again. I have a question, are they going to resurvey that lot before they do anything more?
I don't think so.
Kevin, ask him.
Ask Kevin.
Oh, we'll let him get up.
All right.
He's got a few questions to answer.
Okay, and are they going to rip that cellar hole out, that foundation?
They're taking the foundation out.
That will be removed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think you're back, Kevin.
I took some notes, so I'll try to address them in order. It was mentioned that the site was staked improperly. I have a staking plan that our engineer provided us, shows it staked properly, shows it slanting in the right direction to the extent any of those may have been moved, we've had an issue with that on the site, I can't say, but I can tell you that per the staking plan, which I'm happy to submit a copy of, it was staked appropriately at that time. And the, our engineer also reached out to the abutters' engineer to confirm agreement on property lines, because we were able to find a copy of her survey. on property lines, because we were able to find a copy of her survey from the Title V and permit that was filed a few years ago. We contacted the engineer directly, and they confirmed the location of the property boundaries. In terms of the setbacks, I mean, this does meet the requirements, it meets the required minimum setbacks. You know, it is 10 and a half feet at one point, at the closest point it's 13.8 feet at other points on that side towards Mr. Hague. There was a statement that there was a 2,300 square foot house on a 7,200 square foot lot. The footprint's 1775, and I know that's, it's a distinction I want to note, because I just don't want that being twisted within the record. Mr. Tortelli mentioned something about variances being issued. These aren't variances, this is a special permit, this board knows that. And there are standards that this board is asked to look at to determine whether or not that is an appropriate special permit to be granted. I've pointed out a number of times on other hearings that until 2004, the allowed lot coverage was actually 35 percent. So it's not, is not wildly out of character. This was what was allowed for quite some time. And Mr. Foster was asking about a butler opinion, and, and I say this with all the love and respect possible for this board, I think this board puts an awful lot of emphasis on a butler opinion, sometimes too much, my opinion, but that is a different story. So I think it would be wildly unfair to say that this board does not listen to a butler opinions. However, in this case, what's being proposed is something that is both permissible and entirely appropriate for the area. It meets the setback requirements, is within the allowable thresholds for lot coverage. We're only over lot coverage by about 300 square feet in terms of 20 to 20 percent to 24.3 percent. That's a difference of about 300 and change square feet, which we're not talking...
12 is what I have.
Yep, 312. We're not talking about a significant increase here. So I think that this board can approve this, and I believe the board should approve it. But I'd be happy to address any of the questions that you may have.
I'll go back to my screening question.
So I haven't spoken with my client yet. I mean, if the concern, you know, the widow's walk is located at the center of the house, I'd be happy to look at the architectural plans. The widow's walk is not going to give much of a view into...
Anybody's yard.
Yeah, it's, you know, if you look, it's located here, directly in the center of the house. That's not going to give you a lot of view into Mr. Hague's yard. You know, if there was a requirement for some plantings along the edge, we could certainly do that.
But I think it might be appropriate...
You know, if you wanted a row of arborvitae along the edge, I'm sure my client would be amenable to that.
I mean, you'd have to wait 20 years. I mean, you do a projection from your view for them to have any positive effect.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Mr. Fenner, but if that, if the board is concerned about screening, that's something we could do. We could, we could plant some arborvitae or something along those lines.
I mean, it would make people happy, you know. But that's just make good neighbors, but...
And Mr. O'Brien is a builder, and he does live, he does live in the neighborhood. He has a house in the neighborhood, he lives here, but he is a builder, and he builds beautiful homes, and, and he is not in the habit of building something that's going to be detrimental to either himself or to the neighborhood.
It didn't look like screening could go on the side where the driveway is, where your house is?
It's tight.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
But I think Mr. Hague's property could use some arborvitae, so it would at least give him some form of privacy, because he said woods all along.
I'd be fine with that as a condition. And also, there was a, Mr. Hague said something about, you know, if the engineer were to sneeze, would be happy to provide an ASBOP plan. As a condition.
You guys all agree with that? Some screening on the, on the west?
I mean, if the concern is the roof deck, as I said, I mean, if you do a projection, it's going to provide absolutely nothing, but if it'll make the neighbors happier and they're willing, I think that's, I, to be honest with you, I see a lot of houses here, obviously, and I don't know Mr. O'Brien, but what I've seen, I mean, he builds pretty nice houses. Just my opinion, I'm one vote, but if you're willing, I think that would make the neighbors more amenable to this.
Question?
Until they grow too far under their property line.
When you, when you talked about, I'm just looking at the GIS map and where this would be plotted to, because the plot plan itself doesn't show the other house on Edgewater. But when you talk about putting arborvitae in, Mr. Fenner is correct, it will take many years, but it, I think it's the right thing to do. But when you get down to conditions, if this is approved, then you have to say where in the property line, how far back, because that roof deck actually comes out in the back, and is where, if you look at the side view, that's where, if anyone were going to be looking into Edgewater, it would be looking into the deck. So just, if you do, if the board does approve it, we're talking about where do these arborvitae go on the condition spot, because that roof deck does actually poke out in the back. Okay?
I was thinking right about where it says 10.2, down to where the house juts out, ballpark. Do you see where I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, you know, I don't want to put a specific number on it, but we could plant a row of arborvitae.
Yeah.
I don't know what the appropriate spacing on center for those are, but would, you know, defer to people.
It depends if they're Emerald Greens or Dark Americans.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Attorney Clower, in the bylaw, we have the effects of shadow on adjacent properties. Was there any reason why the architect didn't run a shadow study?
It's not something that's typically done.
I understand.
Especially for a single-family residential construction. If we were, if we were proposing a 40-unit development, we would almost certainly be doing a shadow study, but for a single-family development, that's 28 feet in height, I've never seen a shadow study run, as a matter of course. You know, I think to Mr. Duffy's point, there will be, you know, there will be some effects of shadow, but that's one of the considerations the board's asked to consider. And I think that this board can approve this based on the other factors. And it's not to say that if you cast a shadow, it can't be approved, it's just one of the considerations.
Correct. I just want to say that that shadow effect would be seasonal at best.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Anybody else have anything up here? Frank, you good?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. So what are you guys all thinking?
Motion to close.
Second?
We have a motion to close in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And from there?
Motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve with conditions? All those in favor? Findings first, sorry, findings first. Jim's got the findings for us, we're good.
He does?
Yep.
Okay, applicant, 15 Ingleside Drive, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a single-family dwelling in excess of 20 percent lot coverage. Hearing was once continued due to the lot not being staked properly. Applicant seeks to construct a four-bedroom house with a ridge height of 28 feet 10 inches, footprint of 1,700 and square feet, 1,775 square feet, total living area of 2,368. It would be 312 square feet above what would be per by right building. Previous hearing, the issue about whether the previous special permitted lapsed, which has been resolved to the board's satisfaction. Opposition from both direct abutters concerning size, bulk, and shadow, volume of the house, other opposition at the hearing. Lot size is 7318.1 square feet. Applicants' testimonies, they will be installing a new Title V denitrification system. There was a lot comparison sheet in the file, as well as a previous special permit. Lot coverage will be 24.3 percent.
With 3150.
Yep, 3150 for total.
It's in Wacoit Bay.
Wacoit Bay, Coast of Ponte, overlay district.
And in RC District. That's it. And that's, and conditions?
Did we have a, was there a new submission from the Board of Health on this?
On the 20-foot setback?
No, on the septic.
On the nitri, the new nitrogen? You have the folder right there.
I have a note on the next hearing for that, I didn't know, I think there was testimony about the location and setbacks.
Well, did I hear that the Board of Health requested a nitri, denite system? That should be a finding then, right?
And applicant's testimony to putting one in.
Okay, fine, all right.
As to acceptable.
All right, conditions?
Per plan.
Per plans?
Work hours.
All boards?
Applicant shall maintain the denite system in good working order. No additional lot coverage without modification of the special permit.
No sheds.
Inclusive of no sheds, without modification.
Applicant agreed to...
The no sheds is...
Are you going to find that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how many feet that is in here.
Do you want to shift it to the applicant to provide a landscape plan and the zoning administrator to approve it administratively?
Yeah, let's do it that way, is that okay with you, Norrie?
Sure, now you're, we're talking about the westerly property.
Yeah, westerly, right about where the, where the box is for the septic, down to where the jut is.
Let's see, easterly?
Corresponding with the roof deck.
That's actually easterly.
I was going to say, that's, he's pointing to the east, and you're saying west.
Yeah.
So do you, you want the real east?
I want the real east.
The real east.
Where Kevin knows where the east is, yes.
Exterior lighting to be dark sky compliant?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to have, Norrie, you approve it, that's, and Kevin can present it. Any other conditions?
So lot coverage by structure should be certified post-completion, so that we verify that it doesn't exceed what's allowed. Engineering asked for revised plans to show a demarcated, limited work and soil erosion and sediment control, so you will need that prior to a building permit. And obviously, water.
As Madam Chairman indicated, all referrals from town boards should be included.
Anybody got any other conditions I can think of?
Is there any, Madam Chair, is there any guidance that you want to give to our zoning administrator as to type of plantings? Because we're just talking about landscaped, and that can be just about anything.
The applicant did suggest arborvitae, which I think are fine.
That's good.
And they grow the tallest, the fastest, well, other than...
I just wanted to be easy for...
Someone that's going to get out of control.
I think we can trust him. Are we all set? Okay, we have, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
One no.
One no.
Thank you very much, appreciate your consideration on this.
Next, we have 06424 O'Brien, 20 Sea Spray, Sea Spray Drive, East Falmouth. Was this officially opened?
No.
It's not?
Do you want me to open it?
So we have an application from Michael O'Brien, 144 Winter Street, Renton, Mass. He's applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structure. The subject property is 20 Sea Spray Drive in East Falmouth, which is in the Seaco Shores neighborhood.
Is Kevin doing this one?
Somebody go through the referrals?
Yes.
Somebody go through the town referrals?
Oh, we have referrals from...
Oh, I was going to wait, is Kevin doing this?
Yes. I believe so.
We'll just wait for him to come.
Oh.
I thought we had some referrals to get through.
I have referrals from the planning board, no comment, conservation commission, no comment, Board of Health. I believe they requested the septic system be updated from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom, and there's a note in the file that they have agreed, that you've agreed to do that.
We've provided the plan.
Right. There's town water, and the fire department had no comment.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you again, for the record, Kevin Clower. And I am again before you, representing Michael O'Brien, who is the prospective buyer of this property, 15 Ingleside Drive, currently owned by Paul and Tina Sarhopolis. This is going to be deja vu, there's a lot of similarities between this and the last application, so. They are seeking permission to construct a new single-family residence on an existing unfinished foundation. This property is located in Seaco Shores at about the midpoint of the peninsula. The lot is 87, 8,718 square feet, it's in a residential sea zoning district, and it's not located in a flood zone. Presently, this lot is mostly vacant. It is similar to the previous application in that a foundation was installed and then no further action was taken, it sat dormant since then. The applicant's proposing a new four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a one-car garage, which will conform with all setback requirements, as well as lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. Proposed ridge height is 26 feet 8 inches, which is well below the 35 that is allowed by right. The proposed footprint is 24.9 percent, which necessitates a special permit under 24011.3A4. Under that section, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20 percent is allowed, and the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen coastal bams. Seaco Shores is a varied and changing neighborhood that contains homes that are both quite modest in size and also very substantial. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet. This is larger than the immediately surrounding homes on Sea Spray. However, the board has recently approved a number of homes, either similarly sized or larger, very close to this property, and found those to be in character with the neighborhood. Those would include 72 Woodside, 63 Bayside, 205 Edgewater, 182 Edgewater, 258 Edgewater, and 11 Plymouth. Those are just off the top of my head, and those are the ones I've permitted in the last few years. All of which to say that this property is by no means an outlier within the neighborhood. This proposal is about 400 square feet above the 20 percent threshold, otherwise constructed by right. We could achieve a similar square footage for the gross floor area by bringing this under 20 percent, however, that would result in a much taller house with an additional story with less architectural detail, and which would have more of an impact on the abutting properties. Though the homes proposed were currently vacant, this does not impact the views and vistas from the public ways. The effects of shadow should not be significant, it's a 26-foot structure. Proposal is in character with many nearby homes as I've detailed, and there is a new Title V septic designed for the appropriate number of bedrooms. It is also a denitrification system, as it is within a mapped sensitive area. Therefore, there should be very little effect of nitrogen coastal bams. The applicant's proposal is relatively modest in scope of the increase in footprint over what would otherwise be allowed by right, especially considering they could shrink this footprint minimally and propose a much larger home. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits of the project in character with the neighborhood, and I believe it meets all the requirements of 24011.3A4 and 24012.1E. I would be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Is that with you, Tony?
Thank you, I have no questions.
Kevin, Mr. Clower, you're going, according to your lot comparison, the average in this area for which is 14.54 percent of lot coverage, and you're going 1/10th of a percent under the maximum allowable? I don't necessarily know if that's going to be in keeping. Do we have the revised septic plan yet?
It was submitted some time ago.
Okay, I didn't see that, I didn't get a chance to look at the actual file, but it's a four-bedroom denite?
Mr. Moore, just to that point, I would, I would note, it is larger than the immediately surrounding homes. I'm not going to pretend it's not, but it is certainly in character with the overall neighborhood, and I pointed out a number of properties that are very similar in size, both in footprint and in gross floor area, that are within just a few hundred square feet, a few hundred feet of this property. So yes, it is larger than the immediately surrounding homes, and I'm, I'm not going to even try to coax it into saying it is. It's not, rather, but I think in the scope of the neighborhood, it is not out of character.
I'm not going to disagree with you that the neighborhood is definitely changing and has changed in the last 20 years, but I just get concerned when we always have these applications going up to either a project that wants the maximum ridge height allowed under the zoning law with a maximum lot coverage allowable under a special permit. under the zoning law with a maximum lot coverage allowable under a special permit.
Completely understood, but you know, we are 26 feet 8 inches. We're not at 35 feet.
I understand.
And we could bring this down 400 square feet.
I believe, I understand that you could be doing this by right if you came in, you know, slightly less than the, the square footage on the ground and going up.
Yeah.
Adding a, you know, a half-story above that.
I think, I think it would be a much less attractive project.
One plynote, please. Nope, I'll see if there's any other concern. Thank you, Mr. Clower.
Frank?
Just to confirm, Mr. Clower, there's no non-conformities with the structure. They'll, it'll meet all the setbacks and sideline requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No questions.
Mark?
I don't know. You might wanna know that, too. I agree with Kevin again.
Cats and dogs living together.
You're cursed. You will need a driveway permit.
Mm-hmm.
It says, okay. Anybody else have anything before I go to the public?
No.
Guys all set up? Yeah. Anybody from the public want to speak on this?
No.
Come on up.
We have 31 signed letters from the neighborhood.
We have 31 signed letters.
Oh, okay, bring them up. Thirty-one signatures?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Any count as to whether in favor or against?
I fall against.
Well, technically, you should have had them in a week beforehand.
That's only applicable to the applicants.
I would have liked to have read them, so anybody out there, if they want their letters to be read, they should get them in earlier than presenting them on the, because there might be something in there that's actually, you know, pertinent and valuable and you do yourself a disservice. Not presenting, and I, it does nothing tonight, but anybody who else is watching in the future. Because we do read them, but...
Are they all completely different?
No, they're all the same.
These are all the same. Perhaps it's appropriate to read one of them.
Everyone's the same, just signed by 31 different people?
Yes.
Oh, one with...
Not too long, maybe I'll just read it if that's appropriate.
That would be fantastic.
I, the undersigned, and each one is signed by somebody whose signature I can't necessarily read, but it's signed by somebody, wish to express my concerns about the potential character change of our neighborhood. In particular, the current building plans on the vacant property of 20 C Spray Drive. Seaco Shores Boulevard is a neighbor rich with classic Cape Cod charm, is mixed with just the right amount of nature and saltwater access around us. While looking forward to the possibility of a new home being built and welcoming new neighbors to Seaco Shores, I am very concerned about the character of our neighborhood being forever changed. The proposed building plans showing a 3,579-square-foot house and the letter accompanying the plan states that the house will be of similar size and character to the surrounding properties, in quotes, which is simply untrue. The square footage is nearly triple that of the typical surrounding home. Uh, it's a typical, triple that of the typical surrounding homes. And the proposed size will cast shadows on a budding properties, never mind has the potential to block our sunset views of the Eel River. The volume and size are non-conforming to the current house on C, current houses on C Spray Drive nor the surrounding streets. What I ask of the zoning board of appeals is that you please take into consideration our quality of life and be reminded of our reasons for choosing to own and live in this neighborhood. And then they refer to section 240-11.3, lot coverage of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. Thank you for your consideration. And this one is signed and it's represented that there are 31 of these letters and they appear to be exactly the same.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Going back almost a year now, um, to our discussion on bulk, um, and it was, the neighborhood in concern was Maravista. And I argued, um, the same, that these neighbors are arguing that, and, and more so in the case of Maravista, each street can be considered a neighborhood because, you know, a lot of the developers developed each street and no one in this board agreed with me and we went the way we went, so, um, I, you know, and it's not possible for us to reverse our decisions that we made last year. And we've applied the bylaws contrary to how I felt, so I mean, I, I don't see where I could, you know? And you don't have to go very far to find houses in that neighborhood, especially right out on Edgewater, whatever would be east, that concur with Mr. Clower's opinion. So I, I don't think how, I don't see how we can be selective and, you know, in this fashion.
Anybody else up here?
I don't know if the presentation's...
Go ahead.
Thank you. So hello, I'm here presenting on behalf of my neighbors. The home proposed is non-conforming to the similar size and character of C Spray.
What's your name? You might wanna speak to the mic, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, pull it down.
I apologize. I didn't get your name.
My name's Michelle Ozzioli and I'm a butter and I'm also speaking in behalf of my neighbors. The home proposed is non-conforming in similar size and character of C Spray Drive and surrounding neighborhoods. These are pictures of the existing homes on C Spray and Berkeley Drive. As you can see, these are the typical sizes and styles of this, uh, average home in our neighborhood. Most homes are single-family ranch, Cape-style homes. I'll quickly scroll the, through these, but I want you to have a sense of the character of our neighborhood, not only the size of the houses, but also the lot coverage. Using the attorney's lot comparison worksheet, the living space of 40 homes in our neighborhood show the average home has approximately 1,016 square feet. The proposed home is over 3,000 square feet, will change the look and character of our neighborhood. It will be three times larger than the average home in our neighborhood. The exist, the existing foundation has a lot coverage of 1,015 and they are looking to double the foundation size at 2,173. Here is the living space in this two-story home. Second floor is 1,693 square feet. The first floor is 1,534 square feet. This includes four bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. Here is the image of the proposed house with a garage and porch. The total square footage of the building is 3,813 square feet. Per the bylaw section 24010-2 through 10.6, this new structure is to be built typical in relation to the already existing homes' size and height in the neighborhood. The applicant is seeking a special permit. In the applicant's description of proposed structure indicating that it will be of similar size and character to the surrounding properties simply is not true. It does not reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. Also here, please note, number seven from the letter dated July 11th from Norine Stockman. It was attached from a report from Scott McCain. In the report, he agreed with the fact that the plot of the land is indeed a small lot. This is the main point behind our opposition. This lot is just too small for such a big house. Uh, moving on, we have researched variance approvals and legal requirements. We have checked the Mass General Law's 48. When reviewed in Mass General Law, there are three criterias an applicant must prove in order to be granted the variance they seek.
This isn't a variance though.
Not a variance.
Special permit.
Or special permit. While it is the board's job to determine considerations that are based on financial hardships, and number one, the neighbors of C Spray Drive believe there will be a substantial detriment to the existing character of our neighborhood if this is approved. We also believe that the proposed building does sway from the intent of the Falmouth bylaws that were written to keep the integrity of our already existing neighborhoods. In 2018, the town of Falmouth gave approval to the current owners of this property to build, to build a new structure to fit the character of our neighborhood, a raised ranch, which was in scope of the current bylaws. It was an 1,176-square-foot house with three bedroom, one bath. On the current lot, you could build a 1,750-square-foot home with falls within the bylaws. This lot was never designed to contain a house over 3,000 square feet. Four bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms would have potential nitrogen overhaul because of the septic issues and is so close to a butter's. Resizing to meet our current bylaws will ensure that there will be no harm to the coastal abeyments or surrounding properties. Shadowing on existing homes will be a big issue and a light impact report is in fact requested. Moving along directly affects me and my property. I am in a butter. In direct relation to my property, there's a discrepancy as far as the plot line markers in regards to 20 C Spray Drive. I was given three different survey plans from the builder. Both, I mean, both parties need to come to an agreeable conclusion before any new bill begins. The following slides I'm showing you will show the issues. We have yet to know exactly who placed the stakes inside of my fence because we have heard conflicting statements. So this was originally sent to me by the builder and you can clearly see where the fence line is, where the property line is. And then I received the second one from the engineer. I'm sorry, right here. And then the third one, just in the 11th hour, I get one with this fence going totally, I don't know which way it's going. So that's that problem. And then here, this picture I'm indicating, where the arrow, the middle arrow, that's the end of my home, the arrow and the other, his proposed building, so his building will overshadow 22 feet into my property. So this, I have a beautiful yard. I have the sun. I have the trees. And now we're gonna have this huge building. I'm gonna be looking right at it. It's just not fair. Here are the stakes that were placed, where again, I'm not sure why they are here. I do have a letter from, a stamped letter from my surveyor saying there are discrepancies that I'd like you to review. And then researching Mass General Law 48, section six, there could be potential issue as to whether the existing foundation can be increased in size. And researching no previous grant to permit could be located, although it appears that the foundation was built in 1987. While the foundation can be replaced because of structural defects, the allowable ability to increase the size may not be legally protected under grandfather clauses. This might be an issue for the town council to weigh in on. Here's the existing foundation. And then lastly, this is a non-conforming worksheet that was presented when the current owners looked to build a house in 2018, a raised ranch. Unfortunately, they weren't able to do it. I don't know why, but, um, yeah, that's where we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody questions for her? Anybody else want to speak? Yeah. Yeah.
It's us.
I'm questioning how the survey markers wound up on her lot.
So the fence encroaches onto this property, so it's the line, I'll, I'll address it after the question.
Okay.
Because the plan we have shows the fence on another, on the other property.
I'll, I'll address it.
Okay.
Okay.
Michelle Tortale, 168 Edgewater, again. So my question was, when you brought it up, Mr. Morse, I think it is, you know, when you're going for 24.9% coverage, what happens if you exceed that? Because, trust me, I've seen a lot of mistakes in building. And you go over that, what's the implications for that?
Is the subject to a complaint to the building inspector as the zoning enforcement officer? The applicant could be fined or the town could see conjunctive relief to have a building cut down or reduced in size or fined on a daily basis.
Well, we could ask for an as-built to ensure that it wouldn't get that far.
A what? What's that?
We ask for certification from a builder where they measure everything before...
Oh, okay.
As-built.
Oh, as-built, okay.
Built as.
We try not to get to that point where we're suddenly well over.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Do you want to say something?
I just wanna say, I spoke to the builder.
Come back up. Up here, please.
I mean, I spoke to the builder directly and I said, hey, can you go a little bit smaller? And he said, no, this is a business. I need my square footage to make my profit, quote unquote. So here's a builder coming in, making this huge home. I've lived there 30 years. She's lived there longer than that. We've all been here. You know, I take very big pride in my property and where I live. And he's gonna build something, sell it, and my life goes on. And he said to me, your house is gonna get knocked down. I'm like, who says that? No, I'm gonna croak here. So, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, let's be realistic here. It's changing, it's changing our neighborhood. We all have ranches. We all know each other. And we, again, we want someone to have a home, but, you know, can you make it smaller? Can you make it like conforming to the neighborhood? Does it have to go 25? Can it be pushed up so the whole backyard, the buildings, I mean, it's just disappointing. It really is.
Thank you. Kevin?
So I'll start with the, um, the lot line.
Yeah.
So it's not, typically, we don't survey on, on other properties. But you can see, let's see here. This is a plan that was prepared showing the location of the fence and this is what Mrs. Ozoli was showing. And you'll see the fence starts on her property and encroaches over into the back of this lot. So what you saw was staking along this property line and at some point, the fence crosses the property line. So the stakes appeared as though they were in her property, but it's because that fence encroaches onto this property line.
Do you have a date for that plan?
It's, uh, it's 7:25, Norine, and I'd be happy...
All right, because I was supposed to say, that plan does not match...
No, it doesn't match the earlier one.
Doesn't match the plan we have.
So this was the original plan that was submitted.
Yes.
And we, you know, this was taken off of her plan. There was an exist, a plan on, at the registry, at the registry or in the building department that that, this fence was taken off of. It was not located on a survey because we don't survey other people's properties. We don't have permission to survey other people's properties. So you can see here, though, this is the property, this is the fence that exists on our property that was surveyed. So they updated it at Mrs. Ozoli's request to show the fence crossing the property line, which is shown here. So this fence encroaches onto this lot. That's why those stakes appeared to be on her side.
All right, so do you know why a plan was prepared and stamped that showed the fence not on the property? Because it just seems very peculiar that there was...
I actually have an affidavit from the engineer. I'd be happy to submit it to the file, but I'll read it. And it says, to whom it may concern, please be advised that I, Christopher Charlton, PLS, registered professional land surveyor number 48649, directed an instrument survey on the ground, prepared proposed plans for the property located at 20 C Spray Drive, Falmouth, Mass. At the request of the parties involved in this future development, we have prepared the following clarification, description. An existing conditions plan resulting from a field survey conducted by our survey crew and certified and dated December 21st, 2023, showed a wood fence running nearly parallel into the east of the common boundary with 24 C Spray Drive, which was depicted in incorrect position. Upon becoming aware of the drafting error, we made the fence depiction correction in the final existing conditions plan, signed by me and dated February 23rd, 2024. All the elements are shown correctly. The only correction was the depiction of fence lines. Please note that all terminal fence posts were located and depicted correctly all along. The only error was a line connecting those posts. Discussion: Despite a drafting error depicting accurately located fence posts connecting in an erroneous manner, the survey is accurate and agreed upon by myself and Robert O'Neill, PLS, surveyor for the butter, Michelle Ozzioli, at 24 C Spray Drive. The fence was never considered as controlling the boundary and the depiction of the fence is of no consequence to the location of the true record boundary. Rather, the erroneous fence depiction is a scrivener's error of a detail that has no bearing on the survey or the record boundary location. In summary, I affirm unequivocally that my survey solution is correct and that any confusion created by errors in the fence line depiction has no relevance or relation to the true record boundary. We do apologize for any confusion. If you have any questions or desire additional information, please do not hesitate to contact us.
What's the date of that document?
August 2nd.
This particular plan that was up there showing the, the fence running parallel to the easterly property line is not a existing condition plan. It says it's a proposed site plan. And one of the things I had, one of the comments I had to myself as I was looking at this case, is I didn't find that the plans were really all that...
Informative.
Informative.
Yeah.
In fact, I thought it was kind of a sorry job, actually. So it's not an existing condition plan, uh, which I think some people may have thought it was. Anyways, that's just my comment on that.
And Mr. Morse, to your question, I didn't submit it to the board ahead of the hearing because it wouldn't have been a week in advance.
What did you say, Kevin?
Uh, Mr. Morse had asked for the date of the, uh, date of that and it came in over the weekend. But I didn't submit it on Monday or Tuesday because it wouldn't have been a week in advance of our hearing date.
Well, it's a bit troublesome. I was going to say, I think part of the problem here is that we post the plans that were given, and so the public would have understood from a stamped survey that while they don't go on someone else's property, it did show an encroachment at the north, but not at the east. It certainly appeared for the plans we had posted that the fence to the east was fine.
For my survey, it's to the west, that is.
Anybody need either one of those? What, does anybody want to contemplate doing here? Norine, do you have any suggestions?
I guess the question is whether this survey now comports with the neighbor's survey. I mean, I do understand for Falmouth that you don't require a survey to install a fence, and so I would have guessed, based on looking at this July 17 plan, that it appeared from that plan as though the abutter's fence to the east was fully on the abutter's property.
I don't have a PDF of the July plan.
Comment in the letter, though, I think that the fence does not define the property line.
No, of course not.
True.
Of course not. But we did also have a survey submitted to us that showed that the fence was not on the property line.
Right.
And now they're saying it exceeds.
Concern isn't the fence.
I don't understand, the photograph that was shown with a stake on the other properties, why was that stake on someone else's property?
So, well, it's not, Mr. Petrucci, if you follow the property line, the fence crosses the property line. So I think those, those photos you saw were the stakes on, in this area, which is actually the property line. The fence is not the property boundary.
So the abutter's fence is on their property, which is why the stake is where it is. That's, that's a, an existing plan?
Well, this is the proposed, proposed house plan, but yes.
But I mean, that's a pre-existing condition, which we don't have, I don't have in front of me at this point.
So, you know, I can't, I, I've exhausted my knowledge of the surveyor's, you know, efforts here. If I can request the survey to come to a continued hearing, but I, you know, I'm loath to speak more to what the surveyor did and didn't do beyond the affidavit provided.
So do you know if that fence that is at the north, does that belong to this property, or does that belong to the abutter?
I mean, this, I suspect this is Mr. Ozzioli's fence here. This fence here, I'm not quite sure. It's, you know, they've never developed this property that Saropolis is, so I'd be surprised if they had put in a fence of that nature. That could well be, you know, it shows here as Vincent Gregorio, I'm not sure who the actual owner is.
So I guess what I would say to the board is, you know, this is obviously, if this survey that they're showing us now is correct, it's showing that there are two encroachments of fences, and that those would presumptively need to be removed. And I guess the question is, is there some equitable way to manage that potentially? I mean, it looked like that fence looked relatively new.
I think it's difficult to punish an applicant or the owner in this case for someone else encroaching onto their property.
Of course.
Don't think that we want to get into boundaries.
No, we didn't have that information.
What's this got to do with us?
Well, we just have to have a plan that's correct. That's like what we have to have.
But the, the plan is correct, the fence is incorrect.
Right.
Well, I mean, again.
Well, it is showing, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What's that got to do with us?
It's very faint, but it is showing on this proposed plan that that plan exists.
That's from her surveyor.
That's what?
Her surveyor, I think.
No, on the original plan that was submitted with the application. If you, if you look here.
Why was that submitted, then? If that is.
This was the, the original plan that was submitted with the application showed this, this fence in very faint lines, because they're not of this property.
You'll need to wait to speak when it's your turn now. Do you have any questions, Mike?
I just fail to see the relevance of the.
Not relevant, no. Scott, you have anything?
No. Thank you.
Frank, you're all set? Other than you have too much paperwork now?
I'm okay for the time being.
Are you all set?
I have no other questions.
No other questions.
And I'd just like to address one thing. And again, you know, definition of neighborhood. I mean, it's a Seacoast shores neighborhood. I mean, granted, your streets, the street has smaller houses, but you don't have to go very far to find houses that are much larger. And I know you like to draw the boundary lines where you are, but we've determined as a board that that's not how we do it. I, I argued in your favor when this went, was dealt with, and it's just not how we've been doing it, and it wouldn't be proper for us to reverse ourselves.
May I speak, or not?
Sure, come on up. Name an address, please.
Hi, I'm on Edgewater Drive. My name is Diane. I really didn't come here to speak tonight, I was just kind of supporting a friend. But there's two things that popped into my mind that I did want to address. And one is that when you were talking about the close proximity of the houses up at the heights, that was an established neighborhood that was kind of like that. There's a couple of bar scenes, restaurants, it's a whole different ballgame than what Seacoast shores is. I mean, I've been coming down there since the 60s. It is a nature's paradise. You know, we have water on both sides, we have access to Washburn Island, which has rich historic properties. I mean, it has history in this town. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Fineran, is that you are arguing the character, you know, keeping the character intact. You were arguing that argument, and I think that that is a bell that can be unrung. I think that, you know, you, you mentioned Maravista, and that the residents were pleading with you to take character of the neighborhood into consideration. And you were saying as a board that that's not something that you're willing to do, and since we, we're not doing that, we can never do that again. But I think you can. I think that when you hear from more neighborhoods within Falmouth who are saying the same things, that there is an obligation to maybe kind of look at these things as a board and say, you know, we're hearing this argument more and more. I know this isn't effective here, but in many towns are dealing with the MBTA community situations. I mean, these things are happening, buildings are going up, apartments are being built. You're all looking at me like, what's the MBTA? Well, that's where towns are actually having to recreate zoning within their towns if they're along the MBTA. Right now Milton is actually fighting the state. So I know that's beyond what we're talking about in film, in Falmouth, but it's the same, it's the same concept, that people are begging you to keep their neighborhoods intact. And if you have any power to do that, that maybe you can start listening to them. So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
And again.
Anybody else who's coming up?
Yes.
Name an address, please.
Christine Orsi, I'm at 26 Seespray Drive. I just have a couple of questions regarding this whole issue. One is, this is clearly a non-conforming property in my neighborhood. And I know you have mentioned that, you know, yes, neighborhoods are changing and things like that. However, from what I can see, just living here the past seven years, is most of these big, you know, beautiful homes, I should say, are right on the waterfront, okay? And that's where I'm seeing them built, mainly around this whole neighborhood of Seacoast shores. The second thing I want to say is, and I don't know if this can be addressed, or if anybody can address this for me today, however, I did notice when Michelle was going through her presentation, that there was a special permit given, I believe, in 1987, for this property to be constructed on this particular foundation, and it would be about 1,500 square feet. I don't know what happened and what went on with that situation, and why it didn't happen, but to me, that would be more non-conforming to build a ranch on that particular site. So I just wanted to, you know, layer that in, just to, you know, get some feedback on that, because now I just don't understand how we could be putting a 3,500 square foot house on this particular lot, where it's, is definitely changing the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to present, this was from 2017, this is the non-conforming worksheet they had it done, the attorney submitted for the, the current owners of the property when they wanted to build their raised ranch.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like to look through all that.
Okay.
It does.
Thanks. Whoops, sorry. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions up here?
Yeah.
I don't know. Are we keeping this?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony.
Good question. The neighborhood, I guess, contends that the architectural style of the proposed house is drastically different than what exists. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or, so the, the objection is size rather than architectural style? That's what I'm asking.
I mean, it's, it's just huge. It's huge. It takes a 42 square feet going.
You got to come up.
Sorry. You know, the width of the lot is 75 feet, and you have 42 feet, you've got 52, 50 what?
So.
54.
I just want to just try and clarify something here, because, for the board. The objection is that it's, the architectural style appears to be. I, I just want to hear what you have to say. The architectural style appears to be, to fit, it's just the size of the architectural style?
It's, it's everything about it.
The architectural style, it's not the shape, the, the look of the house?
It's.
Does that, is that satisfactory? Like the look either?
Yeah, it's different than, it's different. We have ranches. The house that was going to be built in 2018 was a raised ranch, it conformed to the, the lot of 20, it was going to be 15.5%, I believe. And now you have this house, it's going to have, while it's not 36 feet in the sky, it's 28, and it, and it dots out right, right out, way past my yard, and it's going to be all building. The sun is right there, now it's, I'm going to have major shade. It's huge, you know, it's just, it's just a huge home.
So if it were, say, 2,000 square feet, it might be better?
Probably. And you can, you can, per the, the lot size, put a 1,750 square foot house on there, it would be quite lovely. Nice size home. Why do we have to go so huge? I mean, it's, they're virtually putting another, my home on top of that house, so.
Couple.
A couple. I'm 900 square feet, everybody's, you know, you know. Again, we're not saying, don't put a house, but work with us on that.
Go ahead.
I mean, but you could come in here and ask us to put a second floor on your house, and turn it into a colonial or whatever you want, and, I mean, that's your right. I mean, there, I, I, when we had this argument, and it went on for weeks, I, I remember saying that, as the woman just stated, that, you know, the waterfront is already lost, you know, do we want to control what's there? And, and I got no one to agree with me, and we've been applying the rules the way we're applying them since then.
So the rules.
And, I mean, neighborhood, you keep using the word neighborhood, but your definition, you want it to be just the two streets around you. And that's not how we look at the neighborhood.
That's not true, sir. With due respect, it isn't like that. There's many streets that are, have ranches and raised ranches.
Many streets that have thousands.
In that neighborhood, we do. Yeah, I, I think you need to, like, take a ride around.
We all, we just approved.
Okay. And.
We get, we get houses there all the time.
But why is the law?
Drive down Edgewater Drive East, look at the size of some of those houses.
I know, it's crazy, isn't it? It's just changing. So why do we have that law in place that says the house should be in reasonable size and scope of the neighborhood, yet?
Again, it's your.
This is, this is something that's going to be not in reasonable scope.
You choose, I'm just going to say this one more time. You choose to use your definition of neighborhood, which you, is, is, is small, and it's the one I tried to argue for, but we're not, we're just not applying the bylaws that way. I mean, look at the house that we just approved.
Madam Chairman, just something for the record, if the abutter needs to submit her copy of her PowerPoint presentation for the record, if you could just email that to the zoning administrator or give her a copy.
Great. You can bring it here, and I'll put it in the file. I got the file there. Thank you.
So the reason we're before the board tonight is because we're at 24% lot coverage. 1771, I think, was the number, would be 20% lot coverage, which would be allowed by right. You can get a building permit on this lot by right. And if we're not able to move forward with this, what's going to end up happening is he will shrink the footprint to 1,770 square feet to make it 20%, but it's going to go up to 35 feet, and he's going to increase, he's going to keep the same number of square, same amount of square footage. It's going to be a much less attractive design, it's going to have a much worse impact on the neighborhood. What's been proposed is a really lovely design, that's 26 feet in height, and is not out of character with the neighborhood, as we've discussed it. Yes, it is larger than some of the other houses on this street and on the next street over, but this is very much in line with the neighborhood as a whole, as we've gone over, as we've, has been permitted any number of times by this board. So, you know, what's going to end up happening is, there's going to be a house, and it's a question of, do we want the house that's being proposed, or do we want a house that's going to be blockier and taller?
May I comment?
Sure. It's back.
Higher is fine. You know, I, I sit in my backyard, and I'm going to be looking right at a house, all house, no sun. I would really like a shadow test to be taken into consideration here. The plot lines, I, that has to be addressed. I, I believe it should be on, I don't know why they staked in my yard, it's not correct per two, two surveys I received. So do I have any right in this? Do I have any right by showing two different, three different surveys? And yet, that should be addressed before anything is built, at a minimum.
No. Okay, I don't know if they want a 35-foot tall building.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I'm, I'm sorry, again, but your argument that a taller house is going to throw less shadow, is just incorrect. The taller the house, the more shadow it's going to throw. And again, I mean, this, this is what we've been doing, we have to remain consistent. And.
Excuse me, but I understand what you're saying, but I don't think you're hearing, the, the length of that home proposed goes 22 feet past the corner of my house. So just envision, this lovely big 28, 26.8 roof is going to extend up 28 feet, down 22 feet. That is a huge shadow effect.
Okay, anybody else from up here have anything? Frank?
Are we, questions? I don't have any questions at the present time, but.
Board discussion?
Maybe comments when we get there.
Yeah. Anything else? Do we need any more information?
Chief manager.
Excuse me? Oh, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm not an abutter to this property, but we are on the next street, and I would like to object to the size primarily of the proposed house on Seespray, because not only it's, it's more than twice the size of the other houses on that street. It's just enormous. Because big and large aren't, aren't great enough words to describe how big this house is. And it would make all the other homes look absolutely minuscule. And it's just, and to me, out of character for the neighborhood. Sorry. I have an objection.
Thank you. Board discussion? Tony?
I, let me just say this. I understand the concerns. I think we do have to be consistent in the way we're applying this. This is not a contemporary house, it is a architectural style that does fit the broader community and style. It's not 35 feet high, it's 27 feet, 26 feet. Which is actually, for today's standards.
Conservative.
Very, very conservative. So I just want to point that out, and it's basically all I have to say on that issue.
Jim?
I have some reservations, based on what's proposed. I'm always somewhat hesitant when we're going right up to 24.9%. I have great empathy for the neighbors. I do think that this is, through the lot, the comparison sheet submitted by the applicant, it's a significantly larger home. I mean, 14.54 was the average, and they're going to 24.9. I'm appreciative of the fact that it submitted a D-Nite system, a four-bedroom D-Nite system. The neighborhood is changing. I think that the butters, I take their concerns very seriously, and I'm gonna be... I think I'm empathetic to the arguments that were presented, given the PowerPoint presentation, but they need to understand that the applicant can come back with something that's going to be... It's not gonna be as long, but it's going to be taller, and it won't be coming before the zoning board. It's going to be a by-right construction. So, as they say, sometimes you should be careful, but, you know, you may not want what you end up getting in this particular instance. And in terms of just application, I look at every application that comes before this board differently and independent of the others. Just because we've done something before doesn't mean the board needs to do the same thing again. They should be looking at everything that comes before in terms of the setbacks, in terms of what the issues, what the butters are saying, and so on. So, my two cents.
Thank you. Frank?
I concur with the comments that Jim Morris has just made. This lot is a buildable lot. It's sufficient in size to be built upon. The other one that we talked about earlier tonight had the special permit, not this one. I also am concerned about the fact that the proposed lot coverage by structure will be 24.9 percent when the worksheet that Mr. Clower submitted shows the quote-unquote neighborhood, which is just the immediate streets, I think Seespray and Berkeley to be 14.5. That, to me, is a significant difference. And one of the criteria in Section 240, 11.384, is the size and height of the proposed structure relative to neighborhood average. And I, again, I don't wanna get into an argument about what the neighborhood is, but I don't see the reasonable relationship between the size and height of this structure and the lot coverage and the immediate... The houses in the immediate neighborhood, if I may say so. So, I am approaching that, this case, with a lack of enthusiasm.
That's a good way to put it. I hear you. Scott?
Great comments by all of the other board members. It is very difficult, and I do feel for the folks in the neighborhood. And unfortunately, I guess, the change is coming. We've lived here all my life, and it's not the same town that it was. You hope that these contractors come in with the best intentions. Unfortunately, as you pointed out, profit is part of their thought process. I think I gotta think deeply about the next steps here, but it's hard to say no to it to some degree in my mind.
This horse is already out of the barn. I mean, I argued last year, the same argument that these neighbors have, and, I mean, neighborhood is a subjective term, I guess, and we chose not to apply it the way it's being applied in some cases here. I mean, I just, you know, I mean, it does go up to 24.9, but, I mean, this isn't the only one. I mean, and I, myself, have to remain consistent. And, you know, a street on either side, maybe, but neighborhood, that's not the way we've chosen to define neighborhood. And, I mean, that's just the reality of the thing.
I have a hard time, 'cause I feel this guy's gonna build, no matter what. It's his job. He'll just come in with a 35 all the way.
And that makes me wanna use your word, skyscraper.
Yep.
I think that in the end, and there's another part of this that I wanna approach afterwards in our... But, I mean, I think we should be going back and looking at some of these places we approved, you know, six months later, take some pictures, but, I mean...
Thing too, if we do go up to 35, then the next person that does another dwelling's gonna have that in their back pocket.
And we're gonna stretch... We're gonna stretch it that way, too. And I think that everybody's gonna be a loser. I think, honestly, that... I can't be inconsistent and vote against this, you know? Do I wish it was a little smaller? Sure. Did I notice that immediately in the neighborhood? And, I mean, I'm even using the term that way, and I understand, but, I mean, go down. You don't have to drive very far to find structures just like this, and it's...
Anybody have any further questions for Kevin? Or, anybody all set with Kevin, too?
I'm not sure. I'm all set.
Go ahead.
Pretty good at reading the board typically, but I'm honestly not sure where the board is. And I'd hate to see a denial for obvious reasons. You know, there are two members of the board. I think I can ascertain where they are, but there's three I don't know. And, you know, so I'm hesitant to let this go to a vote, because I don't know what that vote's gonna look like. That's my concern right now.
It's a tough one. Are you suggesting any modifications or anything like that?
I've... Listen, I've talked to my client, and to your point, I mean, this is a business for him, and this is the square footage he's looking for. We had the discussion about what it would look like, and, you know, we don't think it's out of character for the neighborhood. We think you've approved many homes like this in the nearby area, in this specific neighborhood. We think that you can approve this. So, I don't wanna... I would like to see... I'd like, you know, if I can get some clarity to where people are, we can then, you know, if our hand is forced, I'll go back to my client and talk to him. But, you know, we've talked about, this is a buildable lot by right, and there's going to be a house built here. We think that what's proposed is the best outcome for the neighborhood. We think it's a lovely design. We think it's architecturally very sound. We think it has very nice details to that effect. And you're gonna lose some of that if it's compressed and goes up. And, you know, that would be the likely alternative. But I'd have to talk to my client further if the board's not willing to approve as presented.
I think this is a perfect example of, as I said, be careful what you wish for. And again, I just... Myself, my vote, I have to remain consistent. Would your client be amenable to showing the alternative plan?
I could ask. He's not here. I mean, the problem with, you know, that's... Even just showing that is a significant cost, you know, to have plans prepared that you're not gonna use. You know, it's a few thousand dollars in plans that, you know, it's effectively, you know...
Thrown away.
Thrown away.
I'd like to see what your client says after you report to him how we feel.
Jim has a question for you.
That's right, Clower. I'm just kind of going back to my brain. I know that we have certainly approved requests to go to this percentage of lot coverage, but what I'm struggling with, and I'm happy to have my memory refreshed, is I can't recall an instance where there has been this much opposition from neighbors. Can you think of another instance where we had comparable 30 or so letters of opposition or certainly had cases where you covered for us with 30 letters in support?
So, I point to the development at the Dome at Wood Hole, where there was rooms full of people opposed to it. That's a different animal, I understand. But, you know, we do have situations where there's people in opposition. Some, you know, 30's a lot. I'm not gonna lie to that, but lie about that, but, you know, this is a form letter that people signed because the neighbors came and asked them to sign it. There are people here who are clearly opposed, and I respect their positions and I understand how they feel. I do. But this is a buildable lot, and we're talking the difference of a 1,700-square-foot footprint or a 2,100-square-foot footprint. That's what we're talking about.
I hate to sound repetitive, but we chose not to look at these applications in such a finite manner. I mean, we... How many weeks did we go over the bulk calculations and, you know, and, I mean, the instance there was we were getting a lot of applications on Maravista. And, I mean, their definition of neighborhood is limited to just two streets, give or take. Seaco Shores has a lot of streets, and there's plenty of houses there that are this size and larger, and I just think...
I think we should let Kevin go back and talk to his builder, maybe even talk to the butters, and maybe there'll be something, some change. I... That's what I feel in my heart, that we should let him take an opportunity to go back. Maybe the buildable... When you speak and say all, you know...
And then their choice is gonna be...
A 35-foot house.
A 35-foot house, and that...
But he may, he may not. He may...
How's he gonna get the math to work?
Who knows? We don't know what he's gonna say. I think we should give him an opportunity to at least talk to the builder.
I would agree with that. That's fine.
But you can vote against me. It's just my opinion.
Oh, no. I mean, I just...
Only one.
Like I said, I'm...
So, there are... There's pushes and pulls on this, because we are under a purchase and sale agreement, which has certain timeframes. I'm not sure why that's funny, but that's fine. So, what would we be looking at for a hearing date?
We gotta check with the boss.
We do have a meeting in a week.
I certainly wouldn't be able to have any revised plans in a week. I can talk with my client and be back in a week. I can do that.
Can we do that?
We can. I thought we got next week off. I guess I was wrong.
No, it's the week after.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Frank.
Just wondering, come to the next meeting? Would your client come to the next meeting?
I don't know. I have no idea what his schedule looks like for the next week.
We could resolve that right now.
It could be part of his job, since this is part of his...
Sure, but it is August, and he has young kids. He might well be on vacation. I don't know.
Well, anybody wanna give me a motion to continue? Does anyone not wanna continue and have a motion to close?
I would move to continue to the next available date for the zoning administrator.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, do you wanna look at August 15th? Is this essentially a conversation?
Yeah. I'm here that night anyways, so...
August 15?
I guess.
Sorry, Jim.
I was gonna make a friendly motion just to state the date certain, but August 15.
And we have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the continuance to the 15th, say aye.
Aye.
No?
Nah, I'm sad.
You can say no. It's okay.
I'm all about consistent. See, and I suggest that it's consistent.
All right, so this is continued till next week, 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you all for coming. All right, moving on. Does anybody know the score? All right, we have minutes.
We're tabling minutes for tonight.
Tabling minutes. And we have zoning administrator update.
So, there are two future monopoles that will be eventually before the board. Right now, they are both with Cape Cod Commission. For Quaker Road, the Cape Cod Commission is having a brief discussion, which is available virtually on August 13 at 10:00 a.m., apparently for a pro forma discussion. I was not aware that they do such a thing for cells, but I'm not familiar with how the Cape Cod Commission proceeds when they're looking at new towers, so I will monitor that and see what they're doing with that. And then with Brick Hill, the other monopole, they are also discussing on August 13 at 3:00 p.m. It's also available virtually. They will be reviewing a draft decision at that point in time. I did participate with Cape Cod Commission on their hearing for that. They had a subcommittee that reviewed the cell proposal, and then, I guess, it eventually goes to the full commission for a vote. So, if they vote that determination, then the applicant will be filing here with the zoning board of appeals. We also have had a conversation recently with the police department. They're updating their communications, so they're interested in co-locating on existing cell towers if they can get that access. So, it's now practice to ask for that accessibility for the police department. So, if they want to use a particular pole, we will try to arrange that they can have that, so that they won't have to ask for that in the future.
I didn't know they use those poles. I didn't know that.
You have some dead spots in town.
Yeah, they got some real problems.
I didn't know the police use them.
Yeah, apparently, some of the equipment that they have existing is aged or aging out, and it needs to be replaced.
She's being kind.
So, right now, they're...
Integrated is the term I hear.
So, right now, they do have a number of sites that they're looking to use. Many of them are co-locations, and we had a new replacement tower that we recently approved, and I'm very pleased to report that the attorney that worked on that particular cell was willing to let the police department use it for co-location. So, we appreciate people that help us in that way.
Well, take any help.
They have several spots in town where they have no communication, and there've been instances where officers have been alone and unable to call backup. West Falmouth and Woods Hole come to mind, and sometimes they are the same areas where you get no cellphone coverage, but, I mean, we should be all for public safety in the way we can.
So, I think to the extent possible, we will obviously promote that for the future, and for any of the equipment swapouts or new locations, we will help them out with that.
That's totally appropriate.
Absolutely.
As in insist.
Yeah. That's what you all said? And we have board discussion?
Some. Add some I've been thinking about, just to... And I just mentioned it earlier, but, I mean, sometimes we approve things, and I question, you know, whether we should have or whatever. And then, when I drive by, when the project is complete, sometimes I'm pleasantly surprised, and other times I'm slightly disappointed. And I don't know exactly how, but I think... And maybe we'll just do it as individuals and, you know... But, I mean, and then I can think of another one that I can't wait for it to be done, to look at, but maybe if we somehow look at, six months later, at things that we've approved, and, you know, then you can, you know, get a second look at it instead of just, you know, closing the file on it. Like, the one I was very hesitant was on Glenn Avenue. It was the builder's house. I can't... It began with a C. It was an Italian name or whatever, but I was really questioned whether this was a nice project. And when it was in fact done, I thought it was quite nice, and I thought he did a nice job. And I think if we, you know, look in the rearview mirror on occasionally, I think it'll help us to look forward, if anybody knows what I'm saying.
Was it largely landscaping that made it attractive?
Well, it was just the way it fit on the lot, and I thought, you know, I mean, I can't really pick out what I... I mean, I was just hesitant.
Felt right.
Yeah, it just didn't feel right. And then, when it was done, I thought it looked quite nice. And I think, well, it provided me with, you know, a little better outlook on things, a little education or whatever. I mean, and sometimes you doubt yourself and you find that you were incorrect, and other times you think you're correct. And then, when... I'm not gonna mention the ones that I saw completed and I wasn't as thrilled with, you know? So, you know, I'm just throwing it out there that... And, I mean, I can't... Well, this one tonight would have been, you know, one, I mean, we don't know where it's gonna go now, but to look at. And, you know, like I said, I'm just throwing it out there and we can...
That's why site visits...
Yeah, I mean, it's like an after, you know, site visit or, you know, maybe it's as simple as, you know, taking a picture and submitting into, you know... Or maybe we'll save them for our bi, you know, annual meetings or whatever, but I think to look back on what we've done in the past in a completed fashion isn't a bad thing, but, again, maybe I'm the only one that thinks that way, again.
Anyone else for board discussion?
No.
Okay. Board updates. Any updates?
Still looking for an associate board member.
Yes.
Public should be invited to...
Yeah, it's very lonely down here.
Apply with the select board.
Tony's okay to sit next to, right? He's okay. Please join us. And future agenda items?
Can we get out at this time every night?